Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting Tuesday, January 29, 2019, 6:30 in the McCullough Hearing Room. All selectmen are here, sans Mr. Shifrin. Also, I'd like to welcome Advisory here tonight as well to our meeting. That being said, Southborough Youth and Family Services fiscal year 20 budget continued discussion. Mr. Ballantyne? If you will. Thank you.
Hello. So, one of the few open items of the budget for fiscal '20 is the Youth and Family Commission. As you know, we've tossed around a few proposals since their budget was initially submitted, and hopefully, we think we've come to agreement, and the director or their committee could tell us if we're incorrect about that, but at least in agreement as far as the town administrator and myself, we think they made a lot of effort in putting an option on the table that's pretty good for the town and for recognizing the tough budget season. So, they did come forward with an agreement to increase the program coordinator position to 40 hours a week for 44 weeks specifically, and 20 hours for the remaining eight weeks. And that would also smooth out the assistant director's position for the full 52 weeks at full time. As you know, they have that, as we've discussed before, they have that oddity. So, that would smooth that out, and it would also allow them to approve the non-salary portion of their budget with some smaller increases they were asking for. So, the final amount was $183,600. I think you may have that submitted for you, and we think it's a fair proposal. We also realize and recognize that next year's proposal ahead of time for fiscal '21 will be recommending some, at least at this time, will be recommending some part-time hours, specifically to 19 and 1/2 position hours for administrative support for that department. So, just as a heads up, we think that's good to always know when a department's trying to plan ahead, like police and other departments, to have a phased-in approach to their, you know, to their operations. So, it's good to know ahead of time about that, and the town administrator and myself, like I said, are supportive of that, and we hope the board, if they have any questions of us, or the commission, will be happy to take them up.
Mr. Purple.
Madam Chair, just one additional item from what Mr. Ballantyne offered. The increase in the hours and the addition of the benefits in the position is essentially a shifting of the hours and the benefits from the ZBA. As you know, during this budget, we cut the, after conversations with the new building commissioner, we reduced the position in ZBA from full-time down to 19 and 1/2, which also took the benefits out. So, essentially, the hours that were in ZBA in fiscal '19 are being reorganized along with the benefits into Youth and Family Services for fiscal '20. So, there is no increase in FTE, and there is no increase in the benefits, the benefit numbers from last year's as a result of this.
Thank you. If I may, at the last meeting, I had questions for youth and family, and I think this information in the switching of the hours, ZBA to this, as well as I actually did some research on youth and family services across the state, and it was eye-opening, to say the least. So, I can say, based on the information that's come to light since our last meeting, my position was at that time to not support, and I am at this time in support of the change in the budget to include this new change. In a roundabout way. Let me say that again. I'm in favor of the youth and family service budget as presented tonight. That's better. Mrs. Faniff.
I want to thank the chair for having conversations with both parties, the finance team. I know I've been in a number of times asking questions myself, and the patience of the youth commission. I mean, this took a lot of work from a lot of people to get to this budget this evening. So, I'm convinced that we were able to move the money around because of a vacancy to support your needs this year, so we're moving ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Kalenda.
I'm concerned that it may not be enough, so I'd like to know from the commission, are you, I mean, are you confident that this is enough and that the personnel are adequately compensated, and that this is something that is, you know, we can also continue year over year?
Yes.
I think you've been inadequately budgeted for a number of years, way too long, and so I'd like to know, is this enough?
Well, firstly, thank you. We want to thank you for your support. We really appreciate the recognition of the important services that we're providing in our department, and we appreciate working in a community that's so supportive of what we do. So, thank you for that. In response to your question, this is in part why we wanted to put together a five-year plan of sorts to sort of outline some of the other needs, and frankly, if we were to ask for more now, I think it's easier for us to function, to do this in stages versus asking for a lot more all at once. It would be a harder transition for us. So, this feels adequate at the time, for right now, and we definitely would appreciate your consideration of our future requests, especially the administrative support down the line. We would really like to do a lot more in the area of prevention. Our department is putting out fires, so to speak, a lot of the time, and responding to needs left and right as best we can. We'd like to get ahead of the curve and do more work in the area of prevention, and especially with youth. So, that will be coming, but I think for right now, this is a great step in the right direction.
I know there was concern last time that you didn't, so if someone were to come to the office, too often, no one was there. And, you know, one of the worst things, I think, when someone is in need of help and they have the courage to go and seek help and then find that nobody's there.
Right.
You know, that was concerning.
Right.
Is this going to allow you to have, you know, a greater presence?
We have taken some steps to help with that. A couple of years ago, we met with Mark and Brian about the prospect of getting mobile phones for our department, for myself and our assistant director, which makes us more accessible to our clients and to folks when we're not in the office. We also, this year, implemented coverage of our office at least three days a week, so myself, our assistant director, and the program coordinator each take one day where we cover the office and are available for people to stop by while we're doing our other tasks, so we don't make appointments with people on those days. So, we have some coverage right now. It's not ideal, and we do have two senior tax work-off folks who are helping us. They're only about four hours a week right now. In fact, they've finished their hours for the year, but they enjoy working with us, we enjoy working with them, and so they continue to come in on a volunteer basis. So, it's still, it's still an issue, to be honest.
So, you mentioned phones. Do you have phones?
We do. We do. We were able to acquire those a couple of years ago, which is great.
So, someone comes in and no one is there, and they're in need of some immediate help?
Yep.
There's a number that they can call?
Yep. We provide our office number, and we're checking that pretty much on the hour, and we are able to call them back no matter where we are. In the past, we'd have to wait till we got back to the office, and there's some days that we're not there at all because we're out in the schools or out in the community. So, that's helped tremendously with making ourselves more available to people.
Okay. All right. Well, if you're supportive of the request, then I will as well. I would maybe, yeah, I would encourage you to come back to us during the year. Let us know if what has been budgeted is adequate enough for your needs, and if not, I'd like to start preparations early next fiscal year to make sure that you're compensated and that your, you know, team has what it needs to fulfill its vital role for the town.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I'll just make an observation. So, back when I was in college, I was on a committee that had all the groups that made up the Student Activity Fee Council, and we would have budgets, and all those groups would have budgets, and the faculty advisor at the time said, you know, budgets, it's not just money, that a budget is really a plan of action expressed in dollars. And obviously, there's a dollar component to every budget, but there's a plan of action behind every one of the budgets that we're going to be presenting before town meeting. And I think you made a great case describing the action that your group undertakes and that you plan to undertake as you move forward. I think you made a great case for it, and I'm just grateful that everybody was able to, you know, get together over these last two weeks and work out a solution that everybody can be satisfied with for this year, and then set the plan for moving forward into the next year's as well.
I agree. Thank you. Thank you. And Sarah, I may just add that as I was doing my research on many, many different youth and families in the state, there were some really amazing websites. I know you talked about resources and being able to give resources. I would love, you know, to chat with you, you know, once all this is over, and maybe provide you with, or we can email you. Some of these websites, they may be great resources for you and even your commission. I mean, some of these are very fantastic, the things that are set up and the opportunities there. It might help guide you. I mean, I don't think that our website has all the resources that are listed on all these other ones, so it may be something to actually think about also for in the future, how we can get up to speed, you know, on some of these things as well. I think that would help you in a great way as well. Someone may be able to look on the website and get some of the information they need before they call you, which might actually make things a lot easier for all of you as well.
Right.
So, I would love to chat with you more about that.
Yeah, that would be great.
But, again, thank you for all that you do, and all that you do for the citizens of the town. So, that being said, excuse me.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to chime in one thing before you put this to a vote as to what Mrs. Faniff had commented on earlier in thanking the people that helped to put this proposal together. I do want to acknowledge Betsy Rosenbloom, who's Chair Personnel Board, who did help to facilitate some of the issues in terms of the classification of the position, and so that helped to make this proposal a lot smoother and something that can be done without going back through Personnel Board for some of these things. Those things will be revisited next fiscal year, and I think are identified in some of the things that you're looking for in fiscal '21 for a potential reclassification of the position at that time, but we can address that after this change is made and after this proposal goes forward. So, I just wanted to acknowledge her efforts in this as well.
Thank you, Ms. Rosenbloom. I know that you had spent quite a bit of time with Sarah as well and helped guide the process.
Yes, thank you.
So, thank you. All right. Do we have a motion to accept the Southborough Youth and Family Services fiscal year 20 budget as presented tonight?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ballantyne, while you're in the chair, Finance Director, fiscal year 20 budget update. Thank you.
It should be very quick. Let me just grab what we are looking at. This is definitely the shortest slides, slideshow that we've ever done, three, one being the title page. I'm sure you're happy for that. So, we've put in some additional information from our last meeting, several data points as far as values for the town, new regional estimates for the schools, youth and family. The vote you just took is in these numbers. So, this is very high level, but the new estimated tax increase, as you can see, is now below 5%, which is really good for, not perfect, but much, much better. And as you can see, the estimated residential house is a little over $500. Would also like to mention the public safety debt, the year two of the drawdown on that is, represents 0.70% of this increase. So, we feel it's fairly reasonable and in line with what was expected. We'll have more of that prior to town meeting and at-town meeting, a little more detail on that because we know it's a big issue. And just the last thing, our excess levy capacity is still fairly healthy and still hovering around that 1.5, 1.6. It's been kind of there these last few meetings, so we've maintained that to hopefully bring to the rating, the new bond rating that we'll have in the spring. So, the other, only other point on this page I'd make is the budget process. I just want to remind people and illustrate that we started way to the left as the big arrow, and lots of unknowns in that big arrow, and as you go down, we're probably at the third or fourth arrow now, maybe the fourth, where most of the knowns are known, and we just have that little bit of unknown data as far as the regional schools, the things we've talked about, some of the other offsets in the budget that we never known until the last minute, state aid, et cetera, et cetera. So, those handful of things. I don't expect anything, again, that should be too material to change these numbers. You know, I don't think you'll see this go up to 7% or down to 2% or any kind of wild swings like that. I think we're going to be right close to where we end up as far as when we do set the tax rate next fall, or this fall, this coming fall. So, just wanted to mention that. And a follow-up on the last meeting where we did talk about FY '21, I know it was sort of a drastic tax increase we were talking about, and how challenging a year it's going to be next year. It will be, but it's sort of going to follow the same path as you see here, and I think people, you know, there's sort of a little bit of panic that sets in when we first start this process because the numbers are so daunting, but we'll get there, and we'll, you know, through discussions and collaboration like we had with the youth and family, we'll work it out for next year. So, much better numbers. That's a good thing. This just outlines some of the changes since we spoke last. The regional schools, that amount was $116,000, still subject for review by the school department and the governor's proposal to get that local assessment that we need to know. So, again, more to come on that. We had to do a slight revision to the short-term debt interest for fiscal '20. Again, we may revise that again between now and town meeting or shortly after. Some of the offset funds, we also have revised a little bit. Those offset funds are all those odd funds that no one really, I don't want to say doesn't understand, but they're just odd things. And the town valuation, again, we, the town has a total valuation of property that we need to update annually to estimate because that affects the tax rate also. So, all those things were updated again, and we'll keep working on it and updating the board if there are other items that come up in the next, you know, month or two before town meeting, and we'll try to have the most updated numbers for March 23.
Great. Thank you, Brian. Just a quick question. On the governor's budget proposal, when do we anticipate having some concrete numbers on that?
For the town, for the town share, the numbers were actually, the local aid was up a little bit higher than I thought. Unfortunately, the state mixes in their charges with that also, so if you take it all down to the net amount that we're going to get, it was, I think, less than $5,000 difference. So, we're electing to keep the local aid level for now. We'll probably just do that until we set the tax rate. I don't see a whole big difference that that's going to make at town meeting. It's probably going to be a small, you know, a very small difference when we actually, you know, go through and do that calculation.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Faniff.
Brian, on new growth, is the town looking at what's available to develop and how and what the potential financial gain that would be for, oh, like, three years, four years out? Are we looking at that number?
Specific parcels are you talking about, or?
Townwide. EDC is planning, identifying potential new growth areas in town, or are we pretty much maxed out?
No, I think there are certain, obviously, projects you may or may not be aware of that, well, there are some that you're aware of that are going to take a while, and then there are other, you know, the, as far as the residential go, goes, town administrator and myself had a chance to talk with the assessor a couple of days ago, and there's just not a lot of subdivisions going in right now. There are a few out there that are potentially in the next two to three years, but they're very slow-moving, is the way I understand it, and some of the developers just are choosing to go at a very slow pace. So, there's just, certainly for the next year or two, it's, there's not a lot there.
But you don't see this number going down any further?
No.
No. Thank you.
Okay. Brian, I just have one, one further question for you. I know that Advisory's here. Have they been updated on these last numbers that you just discussed with us? Are they aware?
Yes. I don't know the extent that they've, they've talked through them and, you know, discussed them in detail, but the overall numbers, yes.
Okay. I don't know. Ms. Cook, I see you here. I don't know if you have anything further you would like to add for that. I would give you the opportunity if you would like, or if you're fine and haven't had an opportunity to discuss, obviously, that is fine as well.
Is this on?
It is.
Okay. So, Kathy Cook, 11 Graystone Way, Advisory Chair. So, we have been working with Brian and Mark on, so we're up to date with what he showed you tonight. I do expect we're going to have some differences, that we'll sit down with you guys once we're done. So, we haven't voted on anything, but we do have some areas that we would like to pursue further, and Brian and Mark have a pretty good idea what they are too, so we actually hope it's going to come down further, but we'll see.
Okay. Thank you, and we look forward to having further discussions with you as well. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ballantyne. Next up, Barry Rubenstein, Cable Committee Update. Welcome, sir. How are you? Nice to see you.
So, just to give a little bit of an update while Mr. Rubenstein's getting himself comfortable, I just want to acknowledge Barry is the Chair of the Cable Television Committee, and along with his members, Will Warren and Kathy Wolfert, have taken on a daunting task of trying to renew successor agreements with our cable companies. I know that several members of Southborough Access Media are also here this evening. The Board of Directors, Warren Pally, Neil Rosson, Brian Green, Caitlin Willis, who's the Executive Director, who also has been working with the committee, and also, as the Board had contracted with, I don't know why his name just escaped me, Attorney Bill Hewig from KP Law, who is an expert in the cable field to assist the committee in the negotiations. And Mr. Rubenstein wanted to come this evening and just give the Board an update as to where we are, specifically taking a look at the Verizon license, but obviously, each of the licenses falls one year after that one, so if the attorney is to be believed, once the first license falls, the rest of them will kind of follow suit. So, I will, he has a short presentation just to bring you up to where they are now and where they're going to be going, so I will turn it over to Barry.
Thank you, Mark. You've taken care of my first two slides. I did want to mention, in addition to the other members of our small but feisty committee, the people from Southborough Access Media who have been invaluable in this process and have been real partners, and I think the product we've come up with is a result of the efforts of our committee and the people at SAM. So, since it's been eight years since anyone here has had to deal with cable licenses, I thought I'd just give a brief explanation of the background here, what we're dealing with. As the slide shows, we currently have, town has three licenses with Verizon, with Charter, and Comcast. Verizon clearly has the lion chair of the market, and they're the ones whose contract will be up relatively soon. And as Mark indicated, what we're going to be talking about tonight, the terms we're hoping to negotiate, will cover all three contracts, and Verizon going first will set the tone, and the other ones will naturally follow from what Verizon agrees to. So, what's in the licenses, the, you know, they're long legal documents, but the really critical pieces are how much revenue the providers pay to the town, and the town passes on to SAM, and it mainly comes in two pieces. The first pays, excuse me, pays for the operating expenses. That's referred to as a franchise fee, and that's paid as a percentage of the provider's gross revenues. The second part is a payment for capital requirements, and that's a flat amount that's negotiated. The contract also provides a license fee, which by statute is 50 cents per subscriber per year, so that's not a huge, huge figure. We also have the ability to negotiate service standards in terms of how quickly they respond to phone calls, how quickly they respond to complaints, and how quickly they respond to complaints. Just as importantly, though, is what's not included in the licenses, and these are the things that generate the most complaints, unfortunately, and that's pricing, channel selection, and non-cable TV services, internet, telephone, and wireless. There's a process that's laid out in the statute for how the community has to go about preparing for these negotiations. Two parts of it, the community survey and the public hearing, are designed to determine whether the providers are meeting the community's service needs. The budget development piece is to determine whether the providers will meet its future So, we did a survey. It was conducted between mid-October and mid-November. We received 86 responses, and this is really sort of just, it's not a scientific survey, just to sort of take the temperature of the community to see if there's anything out there that we really need to pay attention to, and the results were pretty good in terms of the quality of service and the quality of picture that people are receiving. We did notice that the Charter results were not up to the standards of the other companies. Again, not a scientific survey, so you can't necessarily draw conclusions, but it's something we will look into. we will look into going further. We're also interested to know, are people actually watching the programming on SAM? And the survey indicates 68%, at least sometimes, watch, watch SAM, and of that, 86% are watching local government. So they are paying attention. So moving on to what the providers are currently paying, so all the providers currently pay 4% of their gross revenue, obviously, since they have different subscriber levels that produces different gross revenues for them. And you can see the numbers for what they're each, what Verizon and Charter contributed for capital expenses. Comcast is so small, they only have about 30 subscribers in town, that they don't, at this point, provide anything for capital expenses. You've been provided with the budget numbers that we have. I'm obviously not going to go through those at all. They're above my pay grade, certainly, but if you have any questions about them, we have SAM people here to answer them. The big one is, we're going to try to go from 4% of gross revenue to 5% of gross revenue, which is the highest amount allowed by law. Our council seems confident we'll be able to achieve that. We have budget numbers that support that request, so we're optimistic at this point that we'll get that. On the capital side, we're looking for 159,000 over 10 years, which works out to be about the same annual rate they're paying now. Slight increase, but not, not a significant one. So as I said, we, we're trying to determine whether the, the providers are meeting the community's needs. So on April 3rd, we'll be holding a public hearing to get feedback from the community on service quality, on SAM, and on the budget requests. We certainly would welcome the board to, to attend, to give us their input on how they feel SAM is meeting the community's needs. Again, the public input is strongly encouraged, and the providers all have to pay for getting a transcript of that hearing. So it's helpful to have as many people as there, as possible there. Whatever problems people have, we'd love to hear about them. We'd love to hear about how valuable SAM is to the community. Lastly, I just wanted to touch on three potential issues that will impact what we're trying to do, the most significant of which is an FCC proposed rule. As I said, there's a statutory cap on how much gross revenue the providers can be required to pay. The FCC is proposing that the providers be allowed to deduct from that percentage their in-kind contributions, so things like the drops at all public buildings, the basic cable that's provided at all, in addition to the capital contributions they make. So that would have a significant negative impact on the amounts that these licenses would generate for the access TV channels. The comment period for this change ended at the end of last year. I, I'm aware of a number of comments that have been filed. Mass Access, which is the umbrella organization for the access channels in Massachusetts, through their council filed, filed a 20-page comment, which I've gone through, and there's some very compelling legal arguments why what the FCC is proposing is unlawful. In any event, our council is confident that the rule, if it goes through, will be tied up in litigation for years, and advises that we should proceed as if nothing is happening and, you know, we'll have to deal with it when it comes up. Having said that, we have tried to put into our planning preparation for bad things occurring. Let me say that without getting into too many details about what we've tried to do. The second thing is the length of license. So currently, as I said, we have two 10-year licenses and a 12-year license. Verizon will no longer negotiate 10-year licenses. They will only do five-year licenses. That's why, in the packages you got, we broke down the, the budgets into five-year tranches so that we're prepared to deal with Verizon. But we essentially are prepared to negotiate two five-year agreements. We don't expect the numbers are going to vary much in terms of what we're looking for. And lastly, per capita funding. So we're all aware of the fact that cord-cutting is going on, and people are dropping their cable subscriptions. So Verizon will no longer negotiate a flat amount for capital contributions. They're going to tie it to the number of subscribers. In other words, they'll generate a per-subscriber payment that they will make over time. That number could go up, could go down. But, so that's something we're prepared to deal with going forward. Just an example, from 2017 to 2018, that number went down about 30 and 1/2% in terms of number of subscribers for Verizon in Southboro. So that's out there. One other small item I'll mention that has no financial impact is SAM would like to add some locations where they'd be able to broadcast live from, so in the new public safety building, both, one for police, one for fire, as well as in the library. So we're going to try to negotiate that as well. So that's all I had. We'll happen to answer any questions, and we do need your approval for the terms that we're hoping to negotiate with, with the providers, recognizing these are goals. Who knows what we'll be able to achieve, but we hope that what we're asking for, well, we know it's reasonable. We're optimistic we'll be able to achieve it and hope that the board will support that.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. That was a really thorough report. And as someone that doesn't know a whole lot about what goes into doing that, I feel pretty good about it. So thank you very much. I, I appreciate that. I do have a couple of questions for you, though. So is there a reason why Verizon is going from the 10-year to the five-year, something specific? Or is it just based on subscribers maybe dropping off? Or you could probably answer better than me.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's the uncertainty in the marketplace. They know the FCC rule is out there, for one thing, but it is the fact that no one knows where cable TV is going, or people may know, but they don't know how fast that's going to happen. So I think they just want to sort of hedge their bets so they have some control into something for an extended period of time.
So your committee's comfortable with a, with a five-year for Verizon, a 10-year for, I didn't write it down. Look at that.
A 10-year for Comcast and Charter. Again, we look at it as not a five-year Verizon, but two, two five-years.
Two five-years. Will they negotiate two five-years at the same time?
Not at the same time, but.
You can start working towards it once one is.
Towards it, and they also will know what, what the deal is with Comcast and Charter when they come to the table again. They know what they negotiated, so they know, you know, assuming things haven't changed dramatically, our expectations are, we're going to get the same deal that the other providers have gotten.
Okay. One other final question is, your public hearing on April 3rd, where is that going to be at?
Going to be here.
Here at the townhouse?
Yes.
Okay.
And obviously, we'll, we'll, as we get closer, we'll do as much publicity as we can to get word out, and I know SAM will, will do it as well.
Okay. Wonderful. Again, thank you to your committee and everyone that's done such a really great job on this. Thank you. Mr. Shea.
So, 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 again, thank you for a very, very thorough presentation. Four years here, here on the board, it's the first time we've heard from a, a presentation like this from the cable committee. It's very informative. So you mentioned that one of the things that doesn't come into play here is the pricing for the, for the different companies. So obviously, what would impact pricing is competition. And do you see that Comcast will have an opportunity to get a bigger share of the market in our town?
Well, I, I think they're interested in that. Despite the fact that their contract is not up until 2021, they've already contacted us, given us notice they want to start the process for negotiating a new license. So that suggests to me that they have some interest in trying to expand their footprint in the community. I mean, with 30 subscribers, you'd think maybe they'd say, is it even worth it for us? But clearly, I think they do have an interest in, in building that.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Faniff.
Thank you. I do have a question. It's not my question, a resident asked me. In your spreadsheet for expenses, there's a line, bonuses. Could you identify what that means or what that covers?
Okay.
It seems to be the only line that changes over a course of a number of years.
So instead of raises, the board has been doing bonuses, like for the build-out, we receive bonuses, the staff and I receive bonuses. So thinking that we'd be getting less money throughout the years, that we wouldn't have that much more to be able to give out.
All right. So the salary lines have not increased?
They don't change.
Okay. It's the bonuses that compensates if required.
If, yeah, if there is, exactly. It's not guaranteed.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have support from the board for the terms as described to us tonight, for guidance for the cable committee being five years for Verizon, 10 years for Comcast, and? Who am I missing?
Charter.
Charter. Thank you. Charter. Again, it was a small number, right? That's why. Okay. Is there support from the board for that?
Yeah. So I, I will make that motion to support those as read.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much. Have a great night. Thank you. All right. Next up is the annual town meeting warrant article presentations. Before we start, I would just like to ask the board, under other matters before the board, I'm asking that the board postpone the taking of positions until our meeting on February 5th, as we'll have a full board and we will potentially have more information before then.
Fine. I may not be here for that one or the follow-on one, but we can, I, I don't know that today, so I'm fine. If you want to postpone it, you may, you may still have four, but that's fine.
We can figure something out. We can talk more about that, absolutely. So with the board's willingness from there, we'll just move forward with the presentations. So, as far as the presentation, sir?
Can we make comments?
You can certainly come to the microphone and potentially make a comment, because they're not here to answer a question.
Yeah, absolutely. Jack Barron, Southboro. I just want to make comment, in the cable television, we're getting, I believe, 4%. Many other towns are getting 5%. So your board may want to inquire from that committee what you can do to try to be equal to other towns, Wellesley, Weston, Dover, who may be getting as much 5, some may be getting more.
I think, actually, Mr. Barron, on the last slide they had, they are going to be looking at getting the 5% because that is the most allowed by law.
But you folks can be helpful by putting the pressure on them and saying, we're not signing unless we get parity with the other towns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. First article for presentation, as we go through them, would be Article 7, Personnel Board. Ms. Rosenblum, you're here. Would you like to say a few words, please?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. You'll be relieved to know I do not have a presentation this evening. Betsy Rosenblum, Personnel Board. I just have a couple of remarks. The SAP is currently a work in progress. We've made some minor ministerial changes. The board is meeting tomorrow morning to discuss further changes, and I'd be happy to come back here with a summary as I had last year. I think last year at this time, I was doing the show a month before town meeting. We're a little further out than that, so we're just not there yet. Probably the one thing of interest to this board is, we're going to recommend to town meeting to adopt some modest increases in the salary ranges. For full-time salaries under Schedule A, we worked with Mr. Ballantyne to come up with something that sound, that was sound fiscally and financially, and that would be an increase in the ranges of 1.65%. And we took a little different approach this year, broadened our analysis, and we looked at the CPI in relation to, and that's a three-year average of the CPI. We are currently looking, we had, had undertaken a study on the part-time salaries. We have the final report. Thank you, Ms. Hale. And we'll be looking at that tomorrow, and that, again, would, we, we had a consultant do some market research, and the good news for you folks is, we were not really out of range. Our part-time salaries were pretty much where they should be, no major changes, but we would probably be adopting the consultant's recommendations to tweak them slightly. But the good news is, is most, if not almost all of our part-time employees would be in range, even with the tweaks recommended by the consultant. So thank you for your time. Any questions for me?
Thank you. If I can just ask one question, do you, when do you anticipate having the final SAP?
I'm thinking.
No pressure. No pressure.
Tomorrow will prob, is going to be the last time I'm going to have a quorum for a while.
Okay. Okay. Well, again, thank you.
Hopefully, hopefully, tomorrow, so I could come back to you. But I'll let Mr. Purple know. Well, he'll be there, and he'll let you know. So I'll be happy to come back in February with a summary of everything we voted.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it. Yes, please.
So, Madam Chair, as we're going through the, the warrant, Article 14, which was for seeking a borrowing authorization for recreation for a Chote Field design, $120,000, that was to be done, of which, I believe it was about a three-year, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, a three-year bond, which was to be paid for through the RECC revolving funds. We do have a request from, from the commission to remove the article at this time. Ms. LeValle, who is the chair, has said that, that they're still taking a look at things, trying to make sure that they, they have, you know, all their ducks in a row, options covered. They're looking at, at alternative funding sources, things of that nature. So there's a little bit more work that I think that they want to do. They do intend for this to be a very public discussion, and that was one of my concerns, is the town meeting is obviously a great sounding board to understand where they, where they lie on the project, but they have some more work that they need to do. Recreation is planning regular public forums, they have discussions, but at this time, that they, they do not, do not have a need to enter into that. So I would, unless the board has an objection, we'll remove Article 14 for any borrowing, especially since the funding source wouldn't be available.
The commission itself voted to have it removed.
Yes. That's my understanding from Ms. LeValle.
All right. Thank you. The, the only thing I will add to that is, is Recreation, I would like to thank them for being very responsive to all of the requests we've had of them, as far as process and everything over the last year. They've come a really long way in being transparent and working with the finance team and the selectmen, so I would just like to thank them for that. All right. Next up is, would have been the CPC articles. Unfortunately, Ms. Gillespie is not here tonight, so there will be no presentations on those.
Just to make a note, a note that there is some information in your warrant, Ms. Gillespie has given, given at least the wording of most of these articles. She has worked with the finance team to get the numbers in terms of the administrative article, and I believe, if I understand correctly, CPC is meeting on February 4th to put the final numbers and the final information in. So you will have that for your meeting on February 5th.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Shea.
Can I go backwards?
Yes.
To Article 17?
Revolving funds?
Yeah.
Yes.
Didn't we do something similar to this last year?
So, we did, and you're wondering why we're doing it again, because the intention was to do it once and...
Correct.
Correct. So if you, and, and I apologize, probably it should be listed in bold, maybe that would make it a little bit easier. There is one additional revolving fund being added this year, which is on the bottom of page eight, which is golf course.
Okay.
To basically, any funds that are, that are received by the town from the golf management company can then go into the revolving fund and help to offset any improvements of the course, anything, so that those are not burdened by the taxpayer.
So the purpose of Articles 17 would then be to add golf course to the list of revolving funds?
Yes.
So, so that, that really is the change, is the addition of that one?
Yes, and I think the language in Article 17, Mr. Shea, needs to be clarified a little bit more up front, because it says we're adding a new section, but I think that needs to be specifically explained as to what that new section is.
Great. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Article 27, historical, and I believe no one is here. Next for, would be Article 29, to see if the town will vote to repeal Town Code Section 41 dash 22 dash 1, electioneering prohibited. Ms. Hanlon, you are here. Would you like to step forward, give a... Yep, the microphone here, or the table, whichever you're more comfortable. You have a few coming up, so...
Sure.
So if you'd like to just give a brief...
In my booklet, it's labeled Article 30. I have two of Article 29.
Twenty-nine, okay.
Twenty-nine is the town clerk's.
We must have a different copy than you have. We will get you this copy.
Okay.
With all intended purposes.
Yeah. In my copy, they're labeled 30 and 31, and should be discussed at the same time. It's fairly self-explanatory, but just simply stated, there is already a state law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 50, Section 65, that prohibits electioneering within 150 feet of polling places on Election Day. But nothing in state law requires that this prohibition be applicable to town meetings. So per Secretary Galvin's office, no other town or city in Massachusetts is known to have any curb on distributing voter information at town meeting, such as, you know, this exact electioneering provision, 41 dash 22-1. And Southborough didn't, had no such restriction until the passage of that article in April of 2017. So it's just pretty self-explanatory. It puts it back to where it was and on parity with all other towns and cities in the state.
Do you want to address the second article, seeing as they go together?
Sure.
And then we can ask questions from there.
And then Article 31 is to see if the town will vote to add to Chapter 41 of the Town Code. At the request of the sponsor, warrant articles or their authorized agents, town clerk will prominently display sponsors' warrant article information for voters on tables located in close proximity to the tables at which the voters check in for town meeting. Warrant article sponsors and their supporters may also hand out information to voters outside the entrance of the voting hall. Again, self-explanatory, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I actually have a question or two for you.
Sure.
Under the second part, regarding prominently displaying the sponsors' warrant articles, isn't that currently being done at a town meeting now? And I guess I'm trying to understand, so the difference would be adding the sponsors being able to hand out information outside?
You know, it's, it's really just a basic provision to make sure that there's clarity and transparency to voters, and that voters have access to voter information however they get it. So, for instance, voter information's been located in different places at different times, so the last meeting, I did watch a number of voters walk into the hall without any pamphlets or voter information, because the table was around the corner, so they simply just missed it. So this sort of clarifies to voters that they will have access to voter information.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of the board? Mrs. Faniff?
Mrs. Hanlon, I'm trying to follow, because there are a sequence here between what you have and what I have. Forty-one dash 22 dash 1, is the election, electioning prohibited?
Right.
Okay, so we have that today as Article 29?
As Article 29 and Article 30.
And it'll be discussed together, is that what you asked, Mrs. Hanlon?
Uh, 30 and 31, at least in my booklet, are intended to be discussed together. Oh, thank you. Okay. Right. Okay, yes, so I guess in your packet, it's 29 and 30, but they're just intended to be discussed at the same time, that's all.
Is there a separate petition for what would be my Article 30, Chapter 41? Or is it one and the same?
They're currently listed on one, under one citizen's petition, both articles.
Okay. That's fine, as long as someone follows up with Mrs. Hanlon as far as the sequencing here, so that we have the numbers on the top of the petition, it would be helpful.
What do you mean, the numbers on the top of the petition, Mrs. Faniff?
Just on top of what's being presented this evening, so they represent the articles as they will be printed in the town warrant. So this board has an idea of where they are?
Yes, absolutely.
They're not, they're not numbered the same as Mrs. Hanlon has.
Yeah.
I'm not sure which ones.
Correct, and, and so the, I think the one that Mrs. Hanlon was just handed is, is the correct one at this point, the most recent one. Again, this is why this has got draft all over it, simply because we continue to change. We've taken Article 14 out tonight, therefore that's going to shuffle the numbers again, but yes.
This is Article 29 that I have this evening.
That's correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Any further questions of the board on this particular sequence? Well, Advisory's here, and the presentation was being made. Are there any questions from Advisory? Not at this time? Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Mr. Baron, with your indulgence, while Ms. Hanlon is up there, if we could just move forward through her articles, and then you will certainly have the floor after.
I will take last few.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, so we'll come back to 31. Article 32, I don't see any presenters here for Article 32, Michael Weishon, Peter Khan. So that would take us to Article 33, Karen, which might be 34 on the page you have. I know Marguerite gave you an updated.
So I have 34, 35, 36, 37, that are separate articles.
Right.
Pertain to one bylaw.
And what I have is 33, just for clarity, 33, 34, 35, and 36.
Got it. Okay, well, this is, again, very self-explanatory, but it's to see if the town will vote to repeal Town Code, Section 9 dash 12, Appointment of Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Secretary of the Advisory Committee, which reads as follows. Said Advisory Committee shall choose from its membership a chairman and a secretary. 35, to see if the town will vote to replace, sorry, it's your 34, see if the town will vote to replace Section 9 dash 12 with a new section. At town elec, annual town election, voters will vote to fill any expired term of officers of the Advisory Committee that are elected as follows, chairman, vice chairman, and secretary. So in other words, the voters would have, would be able to elect those three important positions of Advisory Committee. Article 35, I guess, in your packet, to see if the town will amend, vote to amend Section 9 dash 12, consistent with Number Two above to read. Initial terms of the elected members of advisory shall be as follows. Secretary shall be elected for term of one year, vice chairman, two years, chairman for three years. And thereafter, terms for each officer will be three years. 36 in your packet.
Yep.
To see if the town will vote to amend Section 9-11, consistent with Number Two above to read. Any member of said committee shall, who shall be absent for four consecutive meetings or ceases to be a town resident, shall cease to be a member of the committee, and the moderator will fill that vacancy for the, for the unexpired term.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions on this one for you as well. In reading this, and, and for clarity purposes, I worry, or I guess I say, I don't know if it's allowed to have some members of a board be elected and some members be appointed. I view this differently than, say, a member of the Board of Selectmen being appointed to the master plan committee, because we're elected as a member of the Board of Selectmen. And I worry about this, that you will have appointed members and elected members with the same responsibilities, being on the same board, so...
No, no need to worry. Mass. General Law, Chapter 39, Section 16, and Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 21, covers that. So 39-16, on election or appointment, it can be one or the other or a mixture. For 40, Section 21, those are the two operative provisions on state law level, but 40-21, it's homerol. We can decide any way we would like to run a committee, so. I have copies of that for you, if you'd like to see it, but...
I will certainly look it up.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I, I appreciate you, because that was one of the questions I had, my initial question on it. The other question I had was pertinent to the elected, electing the chair, the vice chair, and the secretary. Sometimes on the makeup of a board, when you serve on a board, things kind of pan out who, who is best be served as chair, or someone that wants to be, to be chair, and I worry that you may have somebody, that if these three seats are filled, and, and some boards change every year, they reorganize every year, I worry that it limits the other members of the advisory to be able to fulfill their charge in a way that they may be better suited to be a chair at a particular time than someone else. That's a comment, that's not really a question.
Sure.
But I'm just, I will just share that.
And one comment back is, is they certainly have the ways, means, and prerogative to run if they want to run. I mean, these are the most, one might argue, some of the most important positions in town government, and probably just as important as, as sitting on your own committee, the Board of Selectmen. So, in order to have the voters have a direct say in who is running the town and the town finances, this is one way of providing balance and spreading that authority and giving the voters a direct say.
All right, thank you. That's all I have on that for now. Mr. Shea?
Just one question for me.
Sure.
So, this year, we've had the occurrence where there were actually four members of the Advisory Committee who have resigned fairly recently, a couple of them holding officer positions, you know, the, the chair, secretary of the Advisory Committee. So there is the potential for turnover with these committees. If this were adopted, and let's say there was a situation where the chair, vice chair, and secretary all left at the same time, who, who takes over those roles?
The moderator, it says in the provision, the moderator has the right to fill the vacancies.
But to, but the positions have to be elected, though. The chair, vice chair, and secretary have to be elected.
If you, if you read it carefully, it says that, that vacancies, as they come up, the moderator can, can appoint. So certainly, some member could come forward and say, I think I'm suited for this position. You know, there...
So it's an appointment by the moderator to, to replace them?
If, if they're vacated, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Clundham, Ms. Faniff? All right, I will also ask Advisory if they have any questions for you as well. Kathy, do you want to come up and sit at the?
Is it on? Can you hear me?
Yes, it is.
So I, we haven't discussed this advisory either, so we're not prepared to talk about the substance of what you're recommending, but I want to point out something which Mr. Shea's gone to, I think, ditto here. The current advisory bylaw only has provision for chair and secretary. What we did a few years ago, and I think it was when John Wood, we were trying to get him to be chair again, we agreed we would add a vice chair to basically run the meetings in case the chair couldn't be there. So we've had, we've elected a vice chair every single year since then, even though the bylaw doesn't support us doing that. So depending on how these articles go at town meeting, I just want to make sure everybody understands, we do elect a vice chair to do that, but it's not in the, the bylaw. So that might need to be changed at some point, too, regardless of what happens here. So that's all I wanted to say tonight.
Thank you. All right. That takes us through Article 36. Article 37, to see if the town will vote to amend certain sections of Chapter 27 relative to the town, to town council. Ms. Hanlon, I will...
So that would be 37, 38, and 39 in your packet.
Correct.
Which, those articles are, again, intended to be one by law.
Okay.
Again, very self-explanatory. To see if the town will vote to amend certain sections of Chapter 27 relative to town council to read as follows. Section 27 dash 4, appointment, review, compensation, additional counsel. Board of Selectmen shall each year after annual town meeting, whenever vacancy shall exist, choose some competent lawyer to act as town counsel. Town, sorry, Board of Selectmen may remove him at pleasure. His term of office shall continue until the appointment accept, and acceptance of his successor. In case of a vacancy in the office, the selectman shall fill same by new appointment. He should be paid such compensation by the town as the town shall determine. That's actually pretty much the same of existing language. He shall receive as his salary such compensation is provided in Article 8A hereof, together with such additional sums as may be appropriated for such services as may be performed in addition to those rendered as legal advisor to the town. Duties and responsibilities, I'm not sure you want me to read this, because it's, again, very self-explanatory, but it's, yeah, basic.
Sorry, you don't have to read it unless it is in the packet, it is in the warrant.
Yeah.
If you would just like to...
In terms of just comment, it's just, puts us on par with other towns and lends a little bit of clarification, especially for the voters and the residents. So, Article 38 in your packet, add the following to Chapter 27 of the Town Code to read as follows. Special counsel, unless expressly authorized by statute, vote of town meeting, vote of selectmen, no board or officer or official of the town shall engage, whether or not for remuneration, any attorney other than town counsel with regard to its, or his official duties, or any town business, or the business of any departments thereof. Selectmen may, whenever they deem necessary, employ special counsel to assist or act in place of town counsel. And that, again, is very standard for every town. Article 39 in your packet.
Yep.
Add the following to Chapter 27 of the Town Code to read as follows. Professional responsibility. Town counsel must hold himself to the highest ethical standards and make every effort to earn the trust and respect of those advised and of the community served. Town counsel must acknowledge that he represents the town of Southborough and not any particular board or official, and that when the interests of the town and any particular board or official diverge, he will endeavor, endeavor always to serve the interests of the town. Again, this is very basic. board or official, and that when the interests of the town and any particular board or official diverge, he will endeavor always to serve the interests of the town." Again, this is very basic, standard language and policy for most towns. It just is intended to provide a provision to ensure balanced legal advice and also to hold regular training meetings on state law, including open meeting law, state ethics laws, and the public records law. Pretty self-explanatory.
Great, thank you. Just one question. A few years ago, there was a warrant article, and I don't remember all the, actually, Mr. Stivers is here, he would probably remember better than me. Is this article similar to what was brought forward to town meeting, I think it was three years ago, Sam, maybe?
No.
It's not? Okay.
That was to bid the Town Council services.
Okay, so this is separate. Okay, thank you. That was the question I had.
Completely unrelated.
Nope, that's fine, thank you. Mrs. Vaniff?
Mrs. Hanlon, was this meant to be one article?
It is...
It was submitted as one, so in the warrant, it's one article?
It's one bylaw. It can be voted upon as different articles, but those article numbers were assigned to it.
I think it's one article.
So I was a little bit confused in trying to put this together, because we're trying, you know, it's not my job to try and interpret what you gave me. It's supposed to just go in as it is and without any changes or amendments. However, the beginning of the citizen petition says the following warrant articles. And so that was interpreted as these were individual articles. However, all the discussion tonight, and Mrs. Hanlon has stated, is that, well, these are all being taken together. So if we're going to be taking them all together, then essentially probably should put, as with this one, all the changes in that section should all be in one article.
It's sometimes easier and clearer for the voters to understand, especially if there's multiple things being done. So for instance, if you're striking language, it's easier to just say that and take the vote, and then to move on to what you're replacing it with. So it really is...
So you prefer to have this as listed as one article?
I'm told it's fine, just, it's fine the way it is.
It's our article, that's why we're asking you. So if that's how you prefer it, then we will consolidate it. And would you prefer that?
And bold, bold as sections that Mrs. Hanlon, well, no, the printing we can do. Just highlight the sections that Mrs. Hanlon is, as you separated them, I would just highlight those sections, but as one article.
Yeah, but you're taking multiple votes, so I just, you know, you're taking out language and adding language, so for clarity, for the voters to be able to follow along, I think it's probably fine the way it is.
Well, I think Mark interpreted this correctly, because it was submitted as warrant articles, plural.
Right.
And then enumerated 1, 2, and 3.
Intended to be, exactly, but intended to be one bylaw.
My confusion was the number of signatures that were submitted. You would have, you know, and I would leave that to the clerk, who certified, who certified everything in that, but if you've got four articles and you've only got enough signatures for one article, I was just confused as to how, whether this should be all put as one article, or this should be separated out into four articles, as there was on one of the petitions.
It's one bylaw.
Correct.
For each of the four. So in terms of mechanics, I mean, the way...
I'm just trying to protect, because again, it's not my interpretation or the board's interpretation, the citizen petition article, which means we don't touch, we don't change, we put it in as submitted, and so if I've caused a little bit of an issue here, I apologize. I'm just trying to figure out the correct way that this should be listed, based on how it was submitted.
I would put it in the way that it was submitted, so there's no question after town meeting.
So three articles. In other words, all the, you know, because there were three citizen petitions, one with four, one with two, and I think one with three. As we've discussed them tonight in the grouping.
They're not...
And then the petitioner at town meeting can ask that they be considered as together.
Can ask that they be voted separately, can ask that, can ask to break it up.
They're not, they're not, I mean, they're one bylaw, and all the signatures that were submitted for each, we submitted more than enough signatures in order to create the warrant article. So if there's any confusion whatsoever, I mean, then I guess it's one. But I didn't assign those numbers, so I'm intending one bylaw.
Okay.
And, okay, you get it. Thank you.
I think, I think we're clear. Any other questions on 39? Advisory? Okay. Article 40, she is not able to attend, which leads us back to Article 41, Ms. Hanlon.
So 41 in your packet is "to see if the town will vote to add the following prohibited conduct policy to Chapter 27 of the Town Code. The policy is intended to establish procedures to prevent, whenever possible, fraud, misappropriation, and corruption, and to ensure for its prompt reporting and investigation, and to ensure a coordinated approach for addressing any such misconduct. It's intended to safeguard the assets of the town and the business and financial activities conducted on behalf of the town by its employees, agents, and citizens." And again, it's very self-explanatory, basic, sets up procedures and responsibilities, and basically will allow for greater transparency and clarity, both to voters and, I think, would benefit volunteers and employees greatly, so...
Okay, thank you. Just one question on this one. The policy statement is for the Board of Selectmen and the school committee. Has the school committee, have you met with the school committee or supplied the school committee with this draft? I'm just curious if they've given any thoughts or comments.
No, I have not provided it to them, and, but I'm certainly happy to do that and do that.
Okay, perfect. That was my only question on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the board? Oh, Mrs. Vaniff?
No, I have none.
Okay. Advisory? Okay, at this time?
Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate you coming in, thank you. All right. Last but not least, Mr. Barron. See, you were patient, you submitted this forever.
I think I'm going to be disappointing you.
You submitted this a long time ago, so...
Thank you, Jack Barron, Love and Sadie, Southborough. What I am proposing is a non-binding article, asking the townspeople to elect a team of people to help, in my opinion, modernize our recreation system. And what I'm trying to say is, for example, today in the world of business, you have people who use fractional airplane services, they don't buy the whole jet, they take 10 trips out of 100 that are available. We have Lyft, we have Uber. For people who don't need to own a car full-time, they use these services part-time. And I think in recreation, especially with the new golf course, we have an opportunity to help utilize the golf course with, just in town, Fay School, St. Mark's, and say to them, "Okay, we have you, we have need for a soccer field on Saturdays or Sundays, we can, can you work with us?" And it may involve some money, it may involve different things, but instead of us building our own fields all the time, we say to them, "Use our golf course, we'll give you passes for all your students, faculty, we want to use your field." And I think we can work with some of the other towns nearby, Marlboro, Westboro, Hopkin Town, same thing, they may want to use this golf course, and we may want to use some of their fields, or a hockey rink, or a basketball court, or whatever it might be. And there's other opportunities, for example, in Wellesley, I don't know how many of you have ever driven by Route 9, where they had the St. James Church, where they had a vigil, I think, for eight years or something? Anyway, the town ended up with that land. And the town worked, some entrepreneurial developer came to the town of Wellesley and said, "I'll put up a big athletic building, gym, whatever, everything, work with me, and I'll let the townspeople use it for a nominal fee or no fee, and we'll work together." So I think there's opportunities. Brookline works with Northeastern University, they own a field together, or Brookline owns the field, Northeastern rents it from them to use on different days. So I think there's the ability, where these costs today seem to me somewhat prohibitive. A million, $2 million for a field is a lot of money. You've got four kicks in Marlboro, we can probably rent sometimes if we need it, if we have to shut down a field for resting, or renovation, or whatever the situation. So it was my feeling we should do, be a proactive town and say, "Okay, instead of, you know, we've got new buildings, we've got the highway, Route 30 renovation coming, all these things are going to consume a lot of money." There may be opportunities to buy some buildings on 85 that are, may become available, that would be a good investment for the town to own from Route 30 down to the cemetery. I know I mentioned Ms. Vaniff in the supermarket one day, to look at those properties, I said we really should own them. Because at some point, we may want to build a new senior center or something in that area. It'd be nice if we already had the land. I think we own the house at the corner through the, what's it called, the extra tax we pay, the 3%. I think that owns that house. CPC, thank you. So anyway, this is what I'm asking the townspeople to vote on, is to have a new vision for recreation, without having to spend a fortune, but kind of bartering with what some of the things are we have. So that's it.
I have one question for you.
Yes, go right ahead.
Have you met with Recreation at all, or had a discussion with them?
I spoke with Recreation, they were kind enough to reach out to me. We were unable to set up a meeting before this, but I made myself available, and I'm traveling a little bit, so I won't be available the whole month of February, but I told them, "Whenever you want to meet," I said, "I'll meet you for coffee." They were very nice about it, but we weren't able to meet before this meeting.
Wonderful. I think that that's a great first step. Absolutely.
And I even reached out to Dorian, because I know she's involved that, but she didn't offer me any candy over there.
All right. Any questions from the board? Questions from advisory?
So I just don't know what non-binding means. What's the effect, if you want this to happen and you get this approved, non-binding, what have you really accomplished? So why do you want it to be non-binding?
It is, I'm not allowed to tell the board what to do, in this case. If I said, "You must set up a new Recreation Commission to do this," that's against state law. So all I'm entitled to do as a citizen is to bring this in a non-binding form. So if the townspeople vote to do it, and the Board of Selectmen don't want to do it, I can't force them. The only thing is, you would hope at reelection time, we would remind everybody, "You wanted this, and they said no." That's all I can do.
Because it just seems like the impact of this is creating a second Rec. Commission. We've got a Rec. Commission, so why wouldn't you, why instead would you not want to work with them to encourage them to do the things that you outlined?
They can work right along. I thought what needed, I mean, we've been with this Recreation Commission, I don't know, how many years have we had a Recreation Commission? 15 years? I don't know.
Longer than that.
Longer than that. Nobody's ever come up with any kind of ideas to reach out to, in fact, the golf course fell on us. We didn't reach out to St. Mark's, to my knowledge, and say, "Hey, we want to buy that golf course, we want it for open space, we want it," you know, it kind of, things, we didn't, we weren't proactive in creating the new situations. So this board would have a specific direction to create a proactive situation, to reach out and say, "How can we utilize other recreation facilities in other towns, tennis courts, golf courses, basketball, whatever it is, and we have some things here in our town that we want to share with you?"
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
I have one more question for you now. So what you're suggesting is, if this ad-hoc committee gets created, and who do they report to? Do you see it being to the board, because the board would appoint them?
Well, actually, in the article is a...
At the end, every six months?
Yes, but also, I think it is appointed by, let's see, Town of Southern Recreation, does not appear, hold on, there are a number of non-town, well...
It's created by the Selectmen.
It's created by the Selectmen.
Yeah, that's the way you have it.
Yes. Two members represented, selected by the Board of Selectmen, two selected by the Recreation Commission, one by the Planning Board, one by Conservation Commission, one by Advisory Committee, and the Recreation Director as an ad hoc, non-voting member, and one member of the school committee selected by the school committee as a non, as an ad hoc, non-voting member. So it gives you a wide breadth of town boards to, you know, see what we can do. I think it would give us a lot more opportunities as residents for different recreation things that, you know, townspeople may say, "Hey, look at this, they have a deal with Wayside Tennis that we can use." Maybe a reduced fee, they may say, "Instead of $40 a month, because we have something with Southborough using their golf course at a reduced rate, you folks can use us for $10 a month." I mean, it could be things like that. Doesn't have to be just one straight thing, soccer, or tennis, you know, it can be a variety of recreational things for the whole town.
Well, I'd be interested to know when you have the opportunity to sit with Recreation, and if they can fit it into one of their meetings. I think a lot of people might be interested in the conversations that are had.
We certainly would welcome them, and as I say, they get to appoint some people, and I'm not looking to push them aside, I just think this is a specific goal, probably a little different than what they have been concentrating on.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Barron.
My pleasure. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. And, that's it? That is it, folks, based on our presentations, and we've put off the position on the warrant articles, so all that we have left is, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.